Hi Nancy.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, you're already recording?
It does as soon as I start, actually. Yeah, I just clicked it automatically. Let me, I'll actually stop it and we'll do the, this meeting's being recorded thing when everyone joins.
Okay. Thank you, I'd like to call the meeting to order, the zoning board of appeals of the city of Winona, Thursday, August 26, 2021. Doug, I assume you have the role since we're all here.
Yes.
And I don't see anybody here to make appearances that isn't otherwise planning and scheduled. So I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from July 15, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Brad, thank you, any changes, corrections? For the minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, great, thank you, I will now move on to number five. Excuse me, the public hearing of Matthew and Molly. Sorry, Matthew, how do you pronounce your last name?
Getzinger, that's alright.
Getzinger. 5705 Tony Wath the Trail, requesting a variance from Winona missable code of ordinances, section 480, 24D7C2 accessory structure side yard setbacks, and 480 24D7C4 accessory structure shore yard setbacks for the purpose of building a new deck in the shore yard, case number Z-008-2021. The floor is yours, Matthew.
Great, thank you everyone for being on the call, I know it's another beautiful, warm summer, late summer evening here for us in town. But the purpose of the appearance today, as was articulated, is to seek approval for, I guess what we kind of articulate within our house as a balcony addition to our boathouse. Hopefully everyone present has received our letter to the zoning board as well as the architectural plans and plat survey. I think that the letter itself is helpful and that there's three visual images which really kind of provide the basis for our hardship case in this sense. So what we're proposing, and maybe let me take a step back and say, you know, last year we presented to the zoning board seeking approval to build a screened in enclosure to the top of our existing structure, which we were granted and grateful to build. Subsequent to that, the, there was a building approved to our north, our neighbor to the north, the Dwyer property and the boathouse, well I guess it's called a boathouse, it's hardly in my mind a boathouse as it's maybe originally intended to house a boat, it's more like a house. So I think in image, I think it's three there, you can see kind of, well maybe the first image there, our view is quite obstructed as we're sitting in that enclosure. And obviously everyone likes to kind of relax and sit back and gaze at the capital. Well, we're kind of really blocked from what was built there. And so to remedy that, we're proposing, you know, opening up one of the screens as a doorway and then having an entry where one could walk out to the balcony and still, you know, capture some of the vistas that were now prevented by the building that's been constructed over there. So that, that really is the basis for the request for approval, the permitting process, I guess requires approval in the zoning board process because one of the posts to support the structure is sitting a couple inches off of the lot line. So that really is the variance we're seeking here. And I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability with regards to the drawings or plans.
Thank you, Matthew. Doug, did you have anything you wanted to?
I was gonna share some public comment that was received during this public hearing. If that's okay.
Yeah.
So this was received by, by the neighbor to the north, from the neighbor to the north, Mr. Mike Dwyer. He was unable to join the meeting tonight, but he shared a public comment which was circulated with the board as well for their consideration. And I'll run through just the sort of key points from, from the letter. He requested that the ZBA reject the request citing a number of items here. First was the privacy issues into his house, given the existing second story on, on the boathouse, claiming that the addition of this balcony would further that challenge. Second was the proximity to, to the new boathouse that he is constructing and the impact on, on his views, particularly now that he can't move across or, you know, make any changes to that. He questioned the hardship itself with the fact that in, in his, in, in the letter, he said he expected to see buildings to the north and south of the property, sort of cross views. And then finally, there was concern about the condition of, of the boathouse itself. The, Mr. Dwyer had a structural engineer on site for his property and for his project. And they noticed cracks in the walls that were a concern, given the proximity of the footings to of the existing boathouse and to the boathouse in the construction. So there were a few concerns sort of laid out there. That was in the letter and will be included as, you know, on the public record as well. But I just wanted to, to share that verbally as, as well, so that we all had that.
Thank you Doug. With that, we'll move to, to our deliberations. Doug, it might be helpful for you to be able to go to our share screen as we're asking questions or making comments, so that, so that we can all see the documents at the same time.
Let's see the plans, yes, let me just pull those up.
Maybe just in, in the interim here, while Doug's bringing that up, with regard to the commentary on the structural integrity of the boathouse itself, we had our own structural engineer come out and attest to the structural soundness of our own building. That notwithstanding, one of Mr. Dwyer's foremen punched a hole through our wall, which we're currently in the process of repairing. But be that as it may, we have our own structural engineer who provided a testament to the integrity of the building and foundation. If, if anyone needs that for the record.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew. Doug, can we go, can we go back, actually? I just up to number 10 in the pictures, if you would. Is this, and can you confirm? I know that there's, there's been somewhat of a discussion about a boathouse that isn't really a boathouse, is this the structure that people have been referring to?
I believe it is, yes.
So as I do recall this coming, this, this not Matthews obviously, but the, the structure next door, I do, do recall some discussion about that. I just wanted to make sure I was talking, thinking about the one in the same. So I thank you for that. Okay, so who would, who on the board would, would like to start or what, what page would you like us to be on as you start? If, if there is a page, feel free to, to let us know which page you'd like us to go to.
I, I had a question about Mr. Dwyer's, I guess it would be page two, where you actually have a view from his house where you can, he, you can see his boathouse structure as well as Matthew's screen porch and then a sort of drawing he did of this is the attachment, Doug, I don't know if you have that or not.
Yes, I can. Let me just pull that up.
Yeah. I mean, while you're pulling that up, my, my question when I was looking at all of this was it, it's unclear to me, I, I kind of thought that maybe he had already had plans to build this prior to us approving the screen porch last year. Just because he references and Mr. Dwyer references that he would have put the boathouse somewhere else had he known we were going to approve the screen porch, this is the picture I'm talking about. So, and Matthew, I see that you kind of questioned why Winona would permit this. Who, this wasn't our group, correct? I don't recall having a variance for this structure at 5703.
The, the boathouse in question, the 5703, it did not go through ZBA because it was permitted by rights. It, it met the dimensional requirements of the city ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
So just from a timeline perspective, I believe the 5703 boathouse, if I remember correctly, was formally approved in December of, of last year, of 2020. Just from a, the timing perspective.
And that was the screened in porch on top of an existing boathouse? Or is it like two stories with a screened in porch on top, is that what we're looking at?
So I think there are two separate pieces here, there's the, the boathouse of 5703, which is under construction, which is owned by the Dwyer who, who sent the letter. 5705, which is the, the two level boathouse here in, which is the applicant's property. The, that one came through, that did come through the ZBA for an addition to that second story because it exceeded the 14 foot maximum height for an accessory. And that was, if I remember, Matthew, I think that was a few months before, in the summer of 2020, that that was approved.
Correct. And I guess i- if you'll notice, to add to the discussion, going back to, to our letter, the, the topography at 5703 was raised quite substantially. So I guess by the, the letter of the ordinance, it perhaps is whatever it is, 12 or 11 feet. But that notwithstanding, they raised the topography, which I guess reading the DNA, the DNR's guidelines, apologies, isn't really allowed, but I guess it, it transpired here. And so that, going back to that first picture, as one would sit on our couch within our screened in porch, I mean, we are looking at his wall. And not the capital. You know.
Just have, I, I may have a couple of comments, I think I'm gonna start with this Dwyer letter. First, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the relevance of this, of the, the structure and I think that's a building code issue of claims of whether or not there's the structural integrity is good enough or not. I mean, that, I think that's all a building code issue that we, it's not really relevant to our discussion. I'm glad that it was clarified that this is that boathouse in question, I had that same question. Especially after reading this, I read this letter and about guests and the privacy, the privacy interests that have been asserted here. Because it's, it's not, it's, it's not supposed to be mainly living quarters. And, and so I guess I just don't give it a whole lot of a whole lot of weight. If someone else, if someone can see in, in a, in a boathouse that's not supposed to be used as a, as, as a living quarters. And, and with respect, I think his point, Mr. Dwyer's point number two with the courtesy notice, I mean, it's impossible to give a courtesy notice of something that had not yet existed. So I, I guess I just, I don't give that a whole lot of weight. And I just go right to the factors of whether or not it meets the, the hardship, unique physical property limitations and whether or not there's a harm to the public interest. And so I guess when I turn to this, and also with, with respect to the application, I guess, the DNR guidelines and whether or not those were met, we don't have any control over that. Again, that's, that's a, a building and construction issue. And I can't speak to that. And so I guess my question then would be what's unique about the property itself that requires the variance and, and what, where exactly is the hardship? By my observation, you can still use the porch as a porch and that's its intended purpose. It was a little bit meandering, but.
A second, I can speak to that, I appreciate the comment and I, I guess, you know, our appreciation of our property in part comes from the fact that, I mean, not only we have nice lake access and a nice community and things like that, but it's, you know, one of the visual lures of locating here where we choose to, chose to, to live is, you know, the, the vista to looking at the capital. It's a, it's a very beautiful structure and it's, you know, nice to look at as the sun is setting. And to have spent the money to kind of preserve the enjoyment of that and kind of get away from the bugs, you know, we thought we were really set up to be in a, in a good spot. And then, you know, Mr. Dwyer is, you know, a fairly adversarial individual and some of, of the building kind of seems to be just a dumb as nose at the rules and, you know, and he, and I don't, I don't want to get off topic and tangent, but there's just been a number of instances of disrespect with noise ordinances and disrespect to, to my wife, I'm one of parents. And so it's not, doesn't surprise me that this is what he's seemingly trying to accomplish by building the structure, which I don't know, that's a whole other discussion, but to really kind of blatantly position it to obstruct a key view for us is, is unfortunate and it's frustrating. And so that's really the basis of our hardship, we just feel like, you know, we were blatantly blocked out of a key view and a key vista from something that we sought an ordinance and a variance to, to the ordinance to, to build and construct and put thought into it and try to maintain the, the fact that it was aesthetically appealing in terms of the characteristics of our own architectural building of our house and, you know, and I, I can't say that it, you know, if you asked our neighbor to the south, you know, it isn't impacting their views. I, I don't really see Mr. Dwyer using his property at all, other than moving backhoes around. So I, I don't really know how a transparent deck structure would be anything that would be negatively impacting his enjoyment of his property, which he has every right to. And to your point, it's meant to be a boathouse, so it's not like, you know, by any means we're trying to, you know, invade his privacy. You know, we have two small children that like to look at the lake and like to be out there with the dogs and so. Does that help answer part of your question?
It, it does, and I mean, I, I read, I read Mr. Dwyer's letter and the, the tone of it came through, so.
Okay, yeah, I imagine it did.
I mean, I struggle also to, I understand what you're saying and it's, it sounds like some bad neighbor quarreling, which this isn't what this board is about. And I just wonder what, how we, because we're statutory required to meet state statute to find the reason to give a proven ordinance or a variance. And I wonder, you know, having a limited view to the north or not being able to see the capital, I don't know how. Well, I understand you want, everybody wants to look at the capital, love to see the sunset over the capital, but if, if I don't see that that qualifies as a hardship for a variance. I'm struggling to get there.
Is it a hardship if it's significantly impacting the value of this property?
But is it significantly, I mean, I don't know, do you have a, do you have a peer?
I guess that's where I was going with what I was thinking in terms of a response to your question. You know, if there were two in every way similar properties on the market, but one had a highly obscured view from their porch on their boathouse. You know, one inherently is more desirable than the other than.
And I think we considered zoning restrictions effects on the properties is a consideration. I don't know if that's necessarily, you know, property values, but we also need to think about the short term and long term cumulative effects. Certainly as we creep toward, we have that issue of creep as we're trying to build more and more structures closer to the lake. Which I guess leads me to a question which maybe Doug can answer. Absent, you know, absent, and I guess the absent the need for a side yard setback, would a deck out from a, a boathouse be permissible?
So there were really two, two elements to the, the variance request here. There's the, the area request for the side yard setback, given it's effectively, at, at least at one point to the lot line. And then the other being the only accessory structures allowed in, in the shore yard are boathouses, piers and, and things of the like. And so classing a deck as, as a structure is, is challenging in the fact that it's not an accessory structure. So that's sort of the second component to this. So framing it another way, if this deck were, were on top of a boathouse, it would be permissible. But it's the fact that it's effectively a, a clear addition of, of just a deck, that, that's the challenge. From the zoning perspective.
And see, that's where I struggle is, is with that permissible purpose. And if the boathouse as an accessory structure is already being used as a within the, within a permissible purpose. And there was already a previous variance approved. So that I think it could exceed the height requirements, correct?
Yes.
It's from a, from a timing standpoint, that building wasn't there at the permitting of that screen porch. So we felt like we spent money to build it and now someone just, you know.
It's, yeah, to me, it's an expensive neighbor quarrel, quarrel. Like he's permitted to build that house and that's my struggle is, or the, I pointed a house because from what I know, he may be using it kind of like the house, but the boathouse. And no variance was required, it was permissible, it was permissible building to build. And, you know, we have that issue of creep. So, you know, if we allow you to build a deck, does he just come back and say, well, he got a deck, now I want a deck? And it's who's blocking whose view? And it becomes a race to the shoreline.
Not to mention the other factor, you have to mention the fact that other people up and down the shoreline could also look at the two of you quarreling and say, oh, well, they got a deck and they got a screen porch and they had their view blocked, well, I had my view blocked, so I want a deck and I want a screen porch too. I mean, it just becomes, as Brad has said, kind of a slippery slope.
I, I appreciate those concerns, although I think if you take, you know, a boat or kayak up and down the shoreline, our boathouse is, if not the most modest, one of, you know, the handful that are in from a size and location to the, the shoreline standpoint. And again, coming back to, I know it wasn't permitted by this board itself, but to build something as close that he did to the shoreline, knowing what's happened with our own water levels over the past few years and it's a hardscaped building, you know, we're, we're asking for you know, semi you know, semi-transparent structure, you know, it's a deck that water goes through and doesn't, you know, run off into the lake directly. So I, I appreciate all the comments and, and concerns thereof, but I don't think it's the word I'm searching for is, I guess, you know, out, out of character with what else is in the shoreline in its current form.
I have a quick question, in one of the pictures you show where the post would be. How far out from the existing boathouse is that?
That's 11 feet, that's the corner post and so it's just perpendicular to the end of his building.
How far into the side yard, what's the side yard setback of the post?
A, a few inches off, there's a series of large boulders there that you see in the picture that is the, the lot line.
I think, I, I think you can see Matt, that we're, that we're struggling with, with understanding, right? An unnecessary hardship that is not directly related to, to someone building a boathouse that, that meets the requirements, right? And I, I, just personally, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what the, what the hardship is and that the unique property limitations that you're facing that aren't related to that aren't related to your neighbor, right?
Yeah, I guess it's in part just directly related to what was permitted and allowed, you know, on top of Mr. Dwyer's own picture, I guess he intends to cover that with vegetation and dirt, so it. Vegetation and dirt, so it. It's a substantial height increase to what was ever there or ever intended to be there.
I think what, what Ryan is saying is, is that your hardship has to be your hardship based on your property and your. Lot, not. Based on something your neighbor did. And there, there are numerous instances where people's views. Have been changed. By virtue of construction that happens. Around them and as long as that construction is within code. You know, we can't, I mean, I, I live on the little inlet that's next to Schluter Park and there's a house in front of me that clearly blocks my lake view. But it was built. Uh, you know, to code. And so in the same way that this other adjoining boathouse was built code, so, or built to, you know, um. Dean R approved for Dean R approval, and so. It's not a direct hardship per se to, to, as much as I appreciate that you, that you lost view. I totally appreciate, I think we all appreciate that, it's not that we don't appreciate. Um, that, that, um, that you're missing that view, but, um. But again, we're, we're, our, our hands are tied by state statute to, to focus on hardship. Um, specific to your property, yeah, Doug?
I just, um, the reference for the board, I, I do have a copy here of the, um, the minutes from, from twenty twenty. From the, from when the screen porch was approved. Um, and I, I just have the motion in front of me. Um, the hardship that was cited was through the slope, um, the steep slope of the bank that was there. Um, and the condition of the adjacent neighbor's yard, at the time it was overgrown, um. Prior to the construction of, of the boathouse. Um, it also was stated in the, the motion that the proposal would limit the erosion. Uh, in the best interest of the shoreline as well as the existing vegetation. Um, not, not contrary to public interest, uh, not negatively impacting the neighborhood, so I just wanted to give that as, as reference. Uh, so we, I don't believe Brian was at the meeting, um, and I think Brad was also absent that, that month, so. Just wanted to, to share that, um, for the context as well.
Doug, I also, uh, I did look that up as well, um, yeah, I was excused from that meeting, um. I, I think that. Man. I, I think that the slope isn't necessarily a hardship, I think that's a unique physical property limitation, I think that was misatticorized, um. Um, just as my two cents, um, although I wasn't part of that discussion, um. But I think this is a separate proposal and I, I mean, I haven't heard. Any of those arguments so far about. Erosion or shoreline and I don't know how building, even putting posts close to the shoreline, um, helps. Um, helps the shoreline. And it, and it seems like the existing vegetation has, has changed.
It's not hard.
Right.
So for, for reference, the, the balcony or deck is, would still be ten feet off of. Our. Our, um, shore, so it's not right on top of the shore. That's. Helpful to illustrate.
Is there a reason you don't want to fill the pier?
We, we have a pier, but it's, it's a separate issue, we, we feel like. Here we had an investment and. In extending, you know, the existing. Structure to enclose it and then someone. Found a way to build and. Essentially block half of that view. And I, I feel like kind of hands are tied behind our back a little bit because we're talking about. A permitted structure that appears to fly in the face of a lot of DNR guidelines and. You know, none of the people present were. Within that approval process, but you know, that's the situation that we're dealing with.
I mean, I agree with Nancy that, um, you know, anyone would be bothered by that, um, and appreciate that you're. Trying not. Ask for solid building. Um, to extend it so that people can see, still see the shoreline and just. Like they said, I'm concerned about, you know, just competing neighbors and. I mean, what would happen if city built something and obstructed. Your view in, on city land. I just, I'm having a hard time justifying. That as a hardship.
But it seems to me that there would be due consideration. In the approval process of, of the hypothetical structure that wasn't feeding. Neighboring properties and I feel like that was really disregarded in the approval process for his structure and so I'm. I'm trying to come up with a reasonable remedy that for our. Situation and to your point, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we follow suit and build a, a hard state structure to go out. And continue to, to build on the shoreline and just asking for. You know, a, a structure that overlooks. Um, where we're currently situated and, um, the, the post is opposed, you know, it's. A four by four that would sit. You know, a couple inches off of the lot line and in no way impede any type of access or use patterns for fifty seven oh three.
Eleven by fourteen is kind of a large deck. Just to get a view. Of the lake.
Yeah, that's, that's just how far his building comes out. Overlapping ours, you know, so. You know, if it was. A three foot hindrance, then it would be. You know, we'd be looking for a, a three foot, you know, extension. But just given the enormity of the structure, you know, we're, we're in a shadow.
Yeah, Doug?
Just a couple of points of clarification that, that maybe were not present in the materials or have not yet been discussed, but. I think the, the applicant then just mentioned, uh, and in triangulating this with the, uh, approved plans of fifty seven oh three. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong with you, but these would be exactly in line with one another, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and the other, the other piece here was, um. There, there is an allowance for a slight overhang, um, in, within the, um, within the setbacks unsupported. Um, and one thing, I don't know if I spoke with the applicant about this or if it was with the building inspector, but. Um, you can see from the, the west elevation in the building plans, um, that. Moving that support post, uh, would move it right in front of the, the door even more so, um, and probably make that. Render the door useless, is, is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Doug, we don't currently have a rail system, but to, to your point, I mean, that was. A long-term consideration as we drew up the plans, um. You know, our, our boathouses. Has ability to house a boat, imagine that and, um, isn't built to, uh. Who knows, living there otherwise.
So are you saying you can't use the door because of the post if you were to get a boat? I'm looking at the west elevation.
No, I think Doug's point was the fact that if we move that post over more. And then I think if I understand you correctly, Doug, then the slight overhang that would be permitted. For the guidelines or ordinances, it would be okay, but. I guess the reason for not doing that in terms of an architectural standpoint is it would preclude us longer term from perhaps. Having a boat come into our boathouse, right now we just have, you know, kayaks for the kids and, and things like that in the tubes.
Yeah, I think the, the point that I was sort of alluding to here was. In looking at this, you know, there were two variances requested, both the, the deck structure in the shoreyard as well as the. Side yard setbacks for an accessory structure. And so in looking at this, I did wonder, could the deck itself shift to the south, say, say three feet to clear those setbacks? Um, such that it would just be one request, but, um, I believe to do that it would put the post, you know, right in the middle of the. Of, of the access, that, that was sort of the, the point that I was, um. But vocalizing that.
And when you say, Doug, when you say a slight overhang, are you talking eleven by fourteen, what are you, what's a slight overhang?
No, from, from the side, um, I would have to double check, I believe it's one foot of, uh, supported overhang. Um, and, and that would just be for the side yard, um, so the side poses through to the northern property line.
Oh, that's why you said move at three feet, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling here to find the heart, I, I totally appreciate what you're saying, this happened actually in our, my own neighborhood and. We stewed about it a while and there wasn't a whole lot we could do, somebody built something that totally looks into our screen porch now and it, it's just. The way it goes and, um.
Why does that have to be the case?
Well, because I'm not, I'm not gonna build my screen porch to the end of my yard to overcome it, you know?
No, I, I'm saying the ordinances are, however they're titled, you know, are, they read. Through what their intent should be or they. Followed to the T as they were written however many years ago when some of this stuff wasn't even relevant.
And that's, as I said in one of our last meetings, it's, you know, people maybe need to try to change some of these statutes and, and go that route. Um, but we're. We're, you know, bound to these statutes and. The unnecessary, I mean, there's nothing here about a view. Uh, as, as, uh. You know. A view that's not in your primary residence, it's, it's in an accessory structure. That's now being partially blocked, uh, look, I would love to say yes to everybody that comes here, honestly, I would, I'm kind of. That's just how I roll, but. We have to also be able to document. And, and back up why we're saying, I mean, the other three may totally be able to find something I can jump on board with, but right now I just. I mean, so you build it out even with him and then he decides he's gonna build something higher and. You know, add on, I guess, and he's made all this impermeable surface here, I mean, I can see what he's done. Um. And he didn't speak, you know, he didn't want to speak at this meeting yet, he gave us a three-page letter with pictures and drawings on it. Yeah, I mean, I completely feel what you're saying, I just don't know. I just don't know what, how, what we justify the hardship to be that's unique to your property alone, notwithstanding what your neighbor did on his property, but what is unique about your property? That you need to have a balcony to see the north view of the lake.
Well.
I mean, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just.
No, I, yeah, um. You know, I, I don't have a factual. Basis to support this other than to say that he owns a. Commercial truck company and I feel like that has helped him with some permitting processes because it's just. Every time I go to the DNR site and read. The language of what should be allowable, I feel like. He ran roughshod over those rules one way or another and. By doing so, you know, impacted our property unfairly. And, you know, we're trying to be neighborly and. We've made every attempt to be friendly, um, that's just how we roll, um, and we, we feel like. We've been taken advantage of from that standpoint and I, I don't, you know, have the inner connections with. You know, the, however, you know, he was allowed to do this, but. You know, we've lived here five years, um, I think he's owned his property. A similar amount of time and yet, you know, he's just covered in, in dirt and weeds and gravel and. Who, who knows the end of it? So, you know, we're just trying to. You know, let bygones be bygones and, you know, just. Continue to enjoy our property and we feel like. You know, the money that we've invested to do so has been kind of run roughshod over, you know, to, to our detriment, I would think. You know, the key attribute to locating where we've located is the nice. Vista towards the capital and so when someone builds to block that off seemingly intentionally. That in my mind creates a direct hardship, um. You know, it's, as you, everyone seems to appreciate, like, it bugs you. You know, like, it almost seems to be in spite, like. Why does it need to be so large, why does it need to be so close to the shore, why does it need to be so large, you know, it's just. We have a simple boathouse that could fit a little fishing boat and a kayak. We have no intention of changing the footprint of it, it's fine, it serves its purpose, but now. We really can't enjoy like what it was intended, you were intended to sit on the top of it and look out to the north and south. You know, someone, uh, found a way to. You know, just. Be difficult.
Matt, I think what Diane is saying and I, you know, is that, you know, and we've all said, it's not that we can't appreciate. The dilemma, but, uh, you know, the fact that it bugs us and that it bugs you. Is not, uh, something to hang our hat on in terms of the state statute, in terms of the, the responsibility that we have. Um, and the, the standard that we have to go by and we don't. You know, his relationship with the DNR and how he got his place or whatever has no bearing really in this hearing, because we don't have any. We don't have any say in that and we don't have any control over that, all we have control over is the application that's in front of us. Um, and whether or not it meets the standard.
I, I appreciate that and I guess I'm asking the zoning board to consider the hardship. Just the, the blocked vista and understand that as a homeowner. And so that, you know, that is really the basis at, at the heart of the matter. All of the. You know, additional circumstances I think are. Good color to this individual case, which I think make it unique and perhaps. You know, provide somewhat of an asterix that could be made to this decision and not necessarily made to others.
Um, I'd like to hear from other. Uh, members, uh, Diane spoken up that she's having a hard time getting, uh, passed unnecessary hardship.
I'm with Diane, um, I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling there too, um. The structure can be used for a permitted purpose. Uh, the hardship is stemming from. A structure that was built. And was permitted to be built without need for variance, um. That structure could have been built by, at any time, I, I think the grievance really is that. The neighbor isn't very neighborly, um, and, uh, could have built a smaller structure or. A structure that would have met, met his needs without being so, um. Obscene or ugly in the applicant's eyes, um. But it's, it's a permitted build, um, how it got built. Um, whether or not it skirted some DNR rules or otherwise, I, I don't know, um. Um, it didn't go through this board and that's really the only hardship, um. Uh, argument and I just don't think that. Clears the hurdle here. And I do appreciate the fact that you bought the house for the, you know, because it had, it had a view. But that, that structure could have been built at any time. And that's where, that's where I'm struggling.
Yeah, I just never envisioned something being permitted to being, to being built so close to shoreline and so large. It's, it's almost unimaginable, but that's.
Yeah. And I do appreciate that. I mean, I understand, I understand completely.
Ryan?
Uh, I agree with everything Brad just said.
I think that, you know, the issue of what's permitted to be built on the shoreline is a different process. It's, um, held in the agency and the legislature. So, um, I feel bad that it was built. I, I agree with you on that.
So, um, do I have a motion? I am, I'm motion to deny the request. Sorry, Matthew. I just can't make, because of the unnecessary hardship. Diane, would you like to please state, uh, the reason for the denial of the request, uh, uh, in the context of our state charge? Because it doesn't meet the unnecessary hardship, uh, the lack of a capital view or a better view, the view you had when you bought the house isn't a permitted reason to give for an unnecessary hardship approval. Do I have a second?
I, I second, and I, I would add, I share concerns about the long-term cumulative effects of permitting a deck. I have concerns about whether or not then all the neighbors will want to deck off their boathouses as well.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Motion carries. Matthew, I'm sorry. Our hands are tied.
Yeah, I feel like ours are as well. Yeah, I just, the, the last thing I'd say, I just feel like it sets a unfortunate precedence that, uh, it seems to be two different sets of rules with regards to where approvals are granted and where variances are sought. So, I think the unfortunate situation appears to be that it just leads to a continuous overbuild alongside the lake. And I think that it sets a bad precedence for the size of homes that are being built and tore down and built and, um, you know, that much hardscape is really unfortunate for our waters. And you can see that around us. So.
Don't, uh, Matthew, I don't, uh, don't disagree with that. And, uh, I can, and I don't know that anybody here would disagree with that, but, but again, it has, has a little bearing on that, that your application tonight. Um, what I would say is that as, as we've referenced before, as Diane's referenced before, you know, I think it, I think it is something, um, we don't have uh, as much control over the shoreline, but I, but I think it is something that, uh, as a municipality, it's probably something that we should, uh, we should revisit. Uh, but, uh, obviously, you know, that's a longer term process and that eat, that too, has nothing to do with this committee. So, so, um, which is to say, it's not something that would be revisited by the, it's a zoning issue that would not be, uh, the charge of this committee. Um, to rewrite ordinances or to try to influence DNR uh, approvals in any way. Uh, it's not, it's not the purview of this, of this group. And again, I'm sorry that we couldn't help you this evening based on our, our charge here with the state statutes.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I know that was another tough one, you guys. Doug? And we're getting the next meeting date?
Uh, no updates at, at this point. Uh, nothing, nothing has yet been received.
Okay, we don't have, uh, do we have anything, uh, any applications coming forward?
Uh, not, not that I'm aware of. Um, I've got a couple of people, um, a couple of people maybe about it, but nothing that I'm aware of is particularly close.
Okay. Um, because as you know, I will be out, um, out of commission on the 16th of September. So, uh, unless there's something uh, dire that comes up, uh, in which case, uh, you'll have to manage it since I will be out of commission. Um, uh, but, uh, you know, then I would say we probably won't be meeting until October.
I think that's that.
Okay. Just in case you want to make big plans for the 16th of September, there you go, folks. Um, and I, again, I appreciate all you do. I appreciate you guys being here. Uh, any other updates or discussion on diversity, equity or inclusion tonight? No, no updates? Okay. Great. Um, well, I thank you. Uh, thank you all again. I appreciate, I appreciate the time you took this evening and always and the, and the deliberation. And, uh, we'll look forward to seeing you in October. Enjoy the rest of your summer and your Labor Day weekend.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy.
You too.
Bye.
Bye. Into a John, please.
Oh.
Oh.
Listen to it, Jen. Second?
Sorry. I tried over the adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Okay. Goodbye.
Bye-bye.